Replace the vacancy at this point in time until we know what's going on. But I do have the information, I can read it off to the board of the audience. Thirty percent of my budget cuts equates to one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars moving forward from November on. That will demand a three worker layoff and cut my secretary's hours to twenty-four. I have deducted thirteen thousand dollars out of the machinery maintenance account. I deducted twenty-seven thousand out of the town fuel account. I deducted forty thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars from the highway expense account. Those cuts equal one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars or otherwise thirty percent.
So laying off those three guys, there would be three plus yourself?
That's, that's correct. Because of the absence of my two most senior people who are out on medical, two of the next in line would move up. So it would be myself, two employees, and Gene working twenty-four hours a week at this point. This is typically a draft, this is a little bit open here, but these are my recommendations.
And do you have an estimate on what this would do for the plowing of the roads on a, on a typical, you know, New England storm? You know, not, not a blizzard or anything, but I mean just, you know, a regular storm, you know, six to eight inches or twenty-four hour event, something like that?
Well, I could explain that on a normal, on a normal day or on a normal operation, we sand roads with five sanders. Five trucks will treat the roads, seventy-two miles. It takes approximately three, three and a half hours dependent on the storm to treat all seventy-two miles. So, uh, I apologize, I wasn't a little prepared to speak about snow and ice because I know there's been some, some discussion that there may be some cutbacks or a policy, the board may need to do a policy change in the event that the override just, if it fails. So that's, that's a sanding operation. And sanding operations are, we're, we're called out by the police department. When they find it, it's needed. Plowing operations, if we're making a one, if it's a one pass storm typically, you know, we've got two, three inches and it needs to be scraped off, that's about a, that's about a four, five hour operation. Normal personnel for that is twelve to thirteen trucks attack the roads. Because unlike with sanding, you're sanding, you're sanding the middle of the road. Just want to explain, seventy-two miles of road, when you're plowing, it's a hundred and forty-four miles of road minimum. Sometimes trucks have to make two passes on each lane. That number increases every time they go up. So it's a hundred and forty-four main miles. To do this with four of us, we can attack the main roads and then hit the side roads after that. Problem being is that throughout all four precincts, we've got, on the secondary roads, some of those secondary roads are far uphill that we constantly get a call on during a normal operation. We have cars stuck on the hill. So we will dispatch a truck from a main road to a hill to help the bus or a motorist get home or out. So, I'll tell you what, it's gonna be, if, if it comes down to this, it's gonna be a new experience for the highway department, how we're gonna attack a snowstorm, not count a blizzard. Whether the board decides to, if, if we have to go into layoffs, obviously there'll be permanent layoffs. And whether the board sits down and decides whether they're gonna bring part timers in to attack snowstorms or not, that's unknown at this time. I can't give you that answer.
Yeah, how many, how many part timers do you currently have, like, on, on a list of?
I believe it's three. Currently it's been three. We had, we had five, but two declined to plow any longer than so. Our four sit, drop down to eleven or twelve people. I said twelve, thirteen, we were thirteen, but a couple dropped, but declined to plow any longer. Bringing in part timers, their payday, straight rate, no benefits, no overtime. When it comes to bringing in part timers, they were paid more, whether it was, if it didn't happen, it was day or night, they were paid more out of snow and ice. Between the hours of seven and three, Monday through Friday, the highway crew was on highway salary. Anything on overtime weekends or holidays was paid out of snow and ice. Oh, I do have a breakdown, Mr. Chair, of where the cuts came from out of the accounts under my control. If the board wants to hear them, or I can copy this and get it to Jeff's office in the morning.
Yeah, we could use that at the next, at tomorrow's town hall meeting and at future ones. Because this is, at least from my view, this is what we need. And hopefully we, through various forms of communication, we get the word out and if we have more attendance, and possibly information on, on the radio or in the newspaper, both. But the three largest, you know, three big, you know, departments are here and it's all public safety. And you're gonna lose, you know, four, five people. And how that affects the schedules and things you do. And why the, it's, it's important that this override passes. Because you can only, you know, you can only cut so much to get expenses under control, but then that loses its effectiveness. And to have the, the accurate information to come to meetings like this that are informational, where people can hear it, and hopefully we, one of these meetings, we could actually see faces. That, you know, this is the guy that's losing his job on the police department, or this is the guy that could be losing his job on the highway department, or this is the assistant that's gonna lose their job, you know, in the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, the collector's office. This is the hours that you're gonna be able to pay your taxes, you know, on Monday and Tuesday from, I don't know, nine to one, or nine to four, nine to three, whatever, you know, whatever hours they're open. And that's the thing that I think people need to hear and see. And it's the reason that I asked for the big departments especially to come here 'cause you're gonna, you're gonna lose the most. And it's gonna affect the people the most. And I expect to hear the calls when we have a snowstorm. If, if the override doesn't pass and we're plowing roads with minimal people or police officers getting calls and, you know, nobody shows up for forty-five minutes and they call and, you know, and this is, this is what can happen if this fails. Which is why the information, you know, needs to be not too detailed, but detailed enough so that they see the reality of it. And know we're not gonna find the money somewhere, you know, in the back room or on some ledger this time. It's, it's simply not there. It's either the override passes or this is what's gonna happen. You know, your police are only gonna be out there basically part-time 'cause they're not gonna be there twenty-four seven. Your roads are not gonna be plowed as they've been in the past, the way that you've been used to it perhaps, because they're simply not gonna have the personnel. Their, the money for the fuel and things is not gonna be there. And you, you can make the argument that, well, you can deficit spend. Well, that's just going into debt first. And I don't think that's a smart thing to do. Just 'cause you can does not mean, you know, you can go get ten credit cards and max them all out, just 'cause you can do that doesn't mean that's a smart thing to do or that you should do it. So hopefully we have another one or several more of these. We have more people show up. And if you can get that information to us, we can have copies, we can pass out. As I said, this was kind of a shot in the dark, at least for me. I didn't know how many people would show up, I didn't know which, wasn't sure which room to book. It would've been kinda silly if we booked this one and we had a line out the door, but we'd look just as silly if we booked the auditorium and we have ten people show up. So it was kinda lost in the air.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out something else about this layout with highway department. I'll speak only about mine. For the staff, what I pointed out, laying off three people, the other problem comes into, if a man's out sick, who calls in sick, now I'm down, it's like a, also a one-to-one fight. Two people call out sick, and it does happen at times. Or if a man's on vacation for a week. Obviously, I won't be able to let two people go at one time. Like, I have the opportunity now, if my schedule allows it, I can let two people go in one week. I've done that in the past. Doesn't happen all the time, but circumstances come up and they both meet it. But if a man's on vacation and the other man calls in sick, now, the people that would be staying obviously are senior people. They have accumulated vacation time. That's gonna be a real problem, a situation throughout the course of springtime cleanup, winter time operations. I just wanna point that out with this very small staff. It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard when everybody comes into work. It's gonna be harder when one or two people are out. Got to put in all three or cut the pool.
But yeah, it, it does mushroom, or it can. And it just, it can snowball rather into a larger, a larger problem. The fire department, do you?
Hello, I'd just like to thank you for having me here tonight. I'll always speak positively for the fire department if I can. The challenges that we'll face with a thirty percent reduction are huge. When you take an efficient staff, when you recall volunteers, that's very problematic, as Bud mentions. Add to the mix now a full-timer. When we voted for the two full-time equivalents at the town meeting, what we've done with that is we've staffed a position during the week daytime in four positions on the weekend out of that two full-time equivalent. By me running with Dennis Hamble during the day, during the week, we're able to get the ambulance out the door as soon as the tone goes out. Only because I'm in public safety or I need to mention this, that someone laying on the street needing help, or that's somebody that's calling from home that has called nine-one-one because they don't have other options. And much like Chief Widdick deals with with his officers and Bud deals with with keeping the roads open, ours is emergency based more so than it is anything else. We run an emergency ambulance service and emergency fire service. If, if Chief Widdick's crews are out there doing their job and there's an accident call, they're running to get to that accident for the scene protection. We're running there to do the people care and whatever the environment needs, like gasoline and ground oils and spills. We've been fairly fortunate that we haven't had too many major catastrophes in time or late. But the statistics will prove that, you know, this town goes through a lot of those. We're just as, as vulnerable to those type of calls as any city is in the area. As you know, I work in Rosemont, Pittsburgh on the weekends. And what I see down there, what I see up here, not so different. It's just that it's moved out here. Let's not really say it that well, but for me to take a thirty percent cut, I'd be looking at cutting staff, number one. And then we'd cut into the full-time staff, which generates revenue. It also provides emergency services. And by cutting, I'd probably start with the weekend staff. What we're doing with the staff already is reutilizing it better than it was planned at the town meeting. By me running during the week with Dennis, we've been able to hire the weekend coverage from the on-call force, thus generating some benefit to the on-call people. And we've gotten those four positions on the weekend, two positions Saturday, two on Sunday, nine hours each, giving a seven-day-a-week daytime coverage on the ambulance. Just for example, what that means dollar-wise. Last Saturday, we did six calls, even calling in outside the ambulances. And those calls will probably generate on average five hundred dollars apiece. So, and I, I mentioned the money only because it is part of what we do. For the receipts reserve for appropriation account to work, we have to run the calls. If we don't run the calls, then it doesn't make money and then the burden gets shifted back to the taxpayer. By running the calls, we generate more revenue and reduce the burden on the taxpayer. So my feeling is obviously not to cut staffing first, but when we look at the expense line, we don't have a big expense line. We took twelve and a half percent cut last year on the overall operational salary expense. Level funding for this year is like another three or four percent cut. We add thirty percent to that, we're at forty-five percent. That's slashing the fire department in half. So we need to take it, a department that's not excessive by any means and cut it in half. I just want the taxpayer to be aware of the fact that when they call nine-one-one, they will not get, I can guarantee they will not get the level of service that they get now, even at the reduced, the reduced grade of twelve and a half to fifteen percent from last year. Just as Chief Widdick says, it, it's not only a question for the taxpayer, it comes down to us, our staffing and safety. When we're out there running an emergency scene, if we don't have the efficient staffing to protect the scene and the police aren't available because it's two in the morning or three in the morning, then we're gonna park a fire engine in the middle of the street to try to give us protection. And that's gonna create a bigger hazard. So it's the little things that I think of, but they're big things to us. I'd like to think we run a very efficient operation and we've been doing a lot of things over the last year to improve efficiency and billables and receivables and prove that out. And I would ask that the taxpayers consider the implications with all due seriousness. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Just as a, yes, Ken?
Oh no, I just wanted to point out two things, just for people that are watching at home and people that are here as well. The first being that the, the thirty percent across the board reduction, even if we look at it from that standpoint, while it looks, you may say, well, that's, you know, less than a third, it really is a permanent change in the way the town government functions, or the way, not even town government functions, but the way the town functions on so many level, levels. Just, you know, even liquor license times and milk, which I had not thought of and I doubt other people had thought of, like, oh, that means early closing time for businesses or, or things like that, that, that I had not even thought of until hearing that. And I'm sure that there are ten thousand other small changes besides the big layoffs that, that the thirty percent cut across the board would cause to the way that we live our lives. But, and the bigger issue I wanted to make, or point I wanted to make as well is that these are not like temporary government furloughs, like you hear, you know, federal government will lay off employees for Fridays until they work something out. These cuts that we're hearing about aren't just for the fiscal year. They would be permanent. We would have a new baseline. So even if the school was level funded at zero, you know, zero percent increase next year, our, these cuts would remain in place because we don't have a new source of funding without an override to fund those, to replenish the town's coffers. So that's something that I would advise people to pass on to their family and friends and neighbors to just keep in mind, is that, that these things that we're talking about are permanent. I know that in the past there, we tried having only two police shifts instead of the three and that the town, you know, there was some out, the town did not like that, so we went back to a full-time police. If the town doesn't like it this time, we're not gonna have a lot of options about where to come up with that money to refund unless it's, okay, well Bud, you're just plowing everything yourself. So it's just gonna be Bud out there with a plow and a blizzard. Because there's no, you know what I mean? There's, there just will be nowhere else to, to get money. So the permanent nature of these cuts, I think, should also be reinforced and brought home.
So again, according to the information from the DOR, from the deputy assessor, is a dollar fifteen per thousand will raise the six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, which is the amount of the override that'll be put before the voters. It will pay, it will pay a bill that was voted to be paid on August twenty-second. There, there's a small amount to cover the cost to pay for the additional ballot question and special town meeting. And there's also money in there to restore the hours that the town employees lost beginning in two thousand and twelve. We'll get the link to the front, to the town's website and front page, initial thing. That will take you to the assessors' page where you can look up the record property owner and see your valuation and do the math so you will know how much. Yes, Sue, correct me again, please?
No, I just wanted to mention for seniors, this is on camera. For anybody who does not have a computer, I know a lot of seniors don't use computers. They know they're welcome to call the assessors' office and find out exactly what the impact will be.
Thank you. Which is probably an important point. Again, we, we're kind of at a disadvantage 'cause we can't, as I was corrected by the deputy assessor, we can't give you what the tax rate is. So it's not an easy way to say, you know, this is what it'll be. 'Cause sometimes people, you know, visualize, well, it's gonna be seventeen dollars or it's gonna be fifteen dollars and, you know, some change or whatever. They have, you have an idea. But at least now we have the, the rate, the, the increase, the amount of the increase per thousand that will generate the additional money. Again, this is being asked for an override to pay a bill that was voted on at the joint town meeting of August twenty-second. There were way more Templeton taxpayer voters there than there were Phillipsden. So this was, the people who were there voted to pay this. And now we have to come up with the money to pay it. And some of the things we've heard tonight, it's not gonna be pretty if it fails. Some of the services that you all might be used to being out there and being able to count on, will not be there. I assure you, you could, you could, you could speak with the town accountant, you can speak with departments. We're not gonna go find five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, you know, to transfer out of the insurance account and this account and over here and this expense account and out of this, you know, thing. It's, it's not gonna happen. We may have, it may have been done in the past where we've, at the end of the year or special town meeting, you transfer three thousand out of here, five thousand out of here and cover this. One year we took money from the nine-one-one grant and we took transferred money out of the salary account. And that nine-one-one grant covered that thing to, so we took, you know, it was a hundred and something thousand to pay a bunch of bills and balance stuff out. That is not happening this time. It's, it's not there. Speak to the town employees, speak to department heads that's here. Their budgets were cut in twelve. They stayed the same or reduced a little more this past year. For the sake of the town of Templeton and the employees and for the services that taxpayers expect and are used to being able to do. And we do have to maintain a treasurer and a collector and an assessor and a town clerk. You know, part of that's by law, part of that's, you can't generate, the town cannot generate any income. There's no one there to take your tax payment. It's, it's not gonna happen. So again, it's, and there was some good ideas tonight as far as getting the word out. We did plan on having another town hall type meeting tomorrow. It, it's not an official, we're not voting on anything. It's just to get information and see the interest in, in learning or hearing what will happen if the override does not pass. And this is not the, the argument, the fight, the discussion, however you wanna call it, about the school assessment and the school's budget, whether you think it's too high, too low, dah, dah, dah. All that is done. It's, it's, it's in the closet. This is now on the town. We have a bill and I think we have an obligation to the town employees 'cause they deserve to have a decent wage and make, you know, a decent check. And as you've seen, it'll, it'll come down to your safety. If something happens, oh, I don't need the fire department, oh, I don't need the police department. Well, when somebody comes in your house and, you know, ties you to a chair, you see it on the news all the time. Or you, god, be you get in an accident or you have somebody for a doctor's appointment, but your road isn't plowed and you can't get there. And that's the possibilities and that's the things that can happen, real, reality, if the override fails. So all of you that, that came, I thank you. Please tell your friends and people that you may know that may not have heard about it, that there is another one, a town hall meeting tomorrow night. I believe it's seven o'clock, six-thirty, Liz? Okay, same time, six-thirty PM. Again, it's, it's, the selectmen will be here. There'll be some department heads informal. There's no voting, no, no official town business. It's just information, try to hear from the residents. Some employees, you know, their own time are here to hopefully convince people that it's in their best interest and it's in Templeton's interest to, to pass this override. Which really has not much to do with the school in, in the long term. Which really has not much to do with the school in, in the long term, because this is something that should've been done, perhaps on a smaller number scale, uh, for multiple years now, because, uh, we've just gotten really, really behind the eight ball, uh, as far as money coming into the town and the expenses involved in running it. It's just, we've been outpaced. Yes?
Mr. Bennett, I'd like to speak if, uh, on this matter, on the, on two-and-a-half override, if I may. I, I, I know I'm a little late, I'm asking you, the, the, you know, you to allow me to take their time. I, uh, do I have that permission for five minutes, please?
Is that information?
You can all hear, you can all hear, but, you know, anyway. I'm Steve Drury, I'm from Drury Lane. Uh, I obviously oppose, uh, probably this two-and-a-half, uh, override. However, I think there is a solution. I think the solution is to, uh, possibly look into the bankruptcy aspects, um, and protection that happens in bankruptcies. We might get rid of some debt, we might be able to reconstruct. I'm in favor of eliminating the state process of, uh, having anything to do with the school whatsoever. I think, um, I think over the years, uh, what's happened, um, is that the states kinda say, we're gonna mandate, you gotta spend this, and you gotta spend that, and we can't do that. And it's unfair for the property owners to be, um, burdened by this debt. We said no, three times, and, um, I, I wanna repeat the fact that saying no, um, what meant that we couldn't do it, you know? But, you know, if we went bankrupt, they would lose control. We would be able to read and determine the whole entire situation, um, revamp everything. People would be able to take control of what the situation is in the town, and, uh, and this is the solution. We are bankrupt, we can't afford you guys, and we can't afford to pay the debt. I mean, that's what bankruptcy is. So it's quite simple, um, to do. And more importantly, um, the reconstruction under the bankruptcy protection would probably allow some of you guys to work, uh, for long periods of time. It's, it's very simple, uh, process, and I think, um, we should really, uh, take that avenue. Because after all, um, if we were to do two-and-a-half and override it, um, we're gonna, on, on the contrary, we're, people are gonna lose their homes. Now, you know, the disabled, the low-income are still gonna pay an increase, okay? I don't care what you say. Whether they get exemptions, it's still gonna be a higher factor, and they can't afford it now, they already told you. So, the bottom line is just that we shouldn't be ruled by the school, we should be ruled by us. And I'm in favor of making that happen, okay, in any way we can make it happen. If these people can't do it, then we must remove them and get people that can. 'Cause the bottom line is just that, you know, we're not really getting into this by the limitations of what, um, monies are involved. The school is staying the same, you know? Uh, people are going in and out, uh, laid off, come back. You know, I, I hear these stories, and I, and I, all I can say is, you know, I, I got no reason to be in this school. I got thrown out of this school, you know, because of the way I think. You know, I got thrown out of this school because of the way I think. And, you know, I think, right, I'm a republic, I, I, I believe in a republic, form of government, all right? I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a communist, I'm not socialist, I believe that we should stay in the limits. And the other day, I got this newspaper, it was just like, by, by God, it was, it was fake. And it's about two-and-a-half, it's the guy in the news, all right? It's all about two-and-a-half when it first came out. And it's all these advertisements in there, and all these things that are gonna happen, like, we're gonna lose healthcare, we're gonna lose the ambulance service. And, um, you know, that just thing happened the whole time we had it, did it?
What year is it?
Um, nineteen eighty, uh, October ninth, twenty-nine, is when it went through. And this was fake, you know, and, and I was just amazed at reading some of the, some of the words. And you know what? It didn't happen, and we voted in. And we voted in because we wanted a restriction. We want a restriction in our government, because we couldn't trust these peoples. 'Cause they just keep spending money they can't sp, you know? And it's not all their fault, you know, it's Washington, you know, it's my situation. I'm not blaming them, they're trying to do their job. But I'm in favor of a couple of their ideas of getting rid of the school and us taking it back, okay? 'Cause then we can really rule the situation. We should never be ruled by what happened through this situation. And, and that's what I came to tell you, and I'm asking you to, uh, to consider bankruptcy, people. I'm, I'm asking you because it, it allows you the protection, it gives you reconstruction. And I think if you don't take it, then, you know, people are gonna look at drugs, or we're gonna lose our houses. People are gonna lose their homes, they're gonna move away. I lived here all my life, periodically. I, I sometimes tell the judge, he asks me where I live, you know? I hate to kinda tell him I live on Drury Lane, 'cause it's like a fable, you know? So I tell him I live in my shoes, and tonight, I may end up in my shoes if you keep this up. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Jeff, too.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Again, uh, thank you for some of the ideas, uh, from the sick bank thing to, uh, looking at ways to get the word out to more people. I thank you all for attending. We'll try to work on some things and, and get some better information, more information. Thank you.